Okay.
Microphone on.
All right, I am going to call to order the six thirty meeting, special meeting for the uh second reading of our ordinance of the budget. Okay, I will dispense with the pledge and the invocation. So we've heard all of this before, this is an expedited meeting because of storm, I want people to get home. In a safe manner, so Steve, give us the highlights.
All right, so before you start, yes. You have to excuse me, we don't have a very nice on this, I'll be walking around a little bit. What we have tonight is the second public hearing for the budget per the state statutes and the truth and mileage statutes. The difference between this one and the first one is you're actually going to, I'm gonna ask that you approve resolutions for the budget, so this is the public hearing is to present to the town commission and the residents the proposed millage rollback rate on the final budget for FY twenty twenty three. Uh first, I'm gonna go through the presentation of the mill rate and a little bit of information, I will read the resolution. Um the title of the resolution and a little bit of information off the resolution, and I'll turn it back over to you mayor to for public comments. And then after that, I'll ask you to approve the resolution. Um and then again, that town commission actions are resolution twenty twenty two dash oh seven, and then the budget resolution will be twenty twenty two dash zero eight. Again, and Alicia's got some information she'll be putting out on the budget, but this is where we're at for the last five years. Uh the commission has reduced the mileage from six point seven five uh to what's being recommended tonight is six point three for the twenty twenty three budget. Uh I'm going to read through this slide, and then I'm going to read through some of the language on the resolution, and then I'll I'll turn it back over to you mayor for that comment on the mileage. So just so you can see this, there's a little bit of glare. Um again, the the FY twenty twenty two mileage for the current fiscal year that ends on September thirtieth. Um the budget was uh done on a six point four mils. The FY twenty twenty three approved mileage on seven twenty six twenty two is what was uh recommended by the commission that went on the trim notices was six point three. Um and that same mileage has been brought forward to the two public hearings, so um it it was on the trim notices that went out at third week in August uh of six point three, it was approved um tentatively on uh September twelfth, which was a Monday night. Um and tonight, we're bringing back that same mileage of six point three. Based on that um mileage and the increase in values, the rollback rate, which is the rate that would generate the same amount of revenue on existing properties from the previous year is five point five nine two seven, which is a twelve point six five percent um change of the rollback rates uh above the rollback rate. So we had to advertise this, and it was advertised in Friday's paper that this was a an increase, tax increase, because that's how the statutes um uh put it forth, I'm gonna read you the the title of the resolution and a couple of the the most pertinent parts of the resolution, and then we'll go to the uh the public comment. So a resol- this is resolution twenty twenty two dash zero seven, it's a resolution of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a military for the levy of abnormal taxes for the town of Oakland for the fiscal year beginning on October first twenty twenty two and ending on September thirtieth twenty twenty three, providing for legislative findings and providing for conflicts over quality and ineffective date. Um whereas pursuant to section two hundred point zero six five court statutes, the town commission of the town of Oakland, Florida of public hearings in September twelfth and September twenty seventh to consider the adoption of the fiscal year mileage rates for the fiscal year beginning October one twenty twenty two and ending September thirtieth twenty twenty three. And I'm gonna skip down to a couple of the sections down below, the recitals are true and correct and incorporated here and by this reference to the abnormal property tax mileage for municipal purpose purposes to be levied on the taxable property within the town limits in the town of Oakland, Florida during the fiscal year October one twenty twenty two and ending September thirtieth twenty twenty three is hereby set at the rate of six point three zero mils. The percentage by which this mileage be levied exceeds the rollback rate of five point five nine two seven computed pursuant to Florida law is twelve point six five percent. We do that computation right off the D R that the property appraiser provides, um and that's what's what's already been provided to them, we have some other forms we fill out next week, um when this is all said and done, this will be your uh information will be directed to the property appraiser tonight, this resolution um so that it's on the record, um we have three days after we do this to 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 get that, and we're gonna get that to them tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, mayor, for a public comment if there is any, uh for you to open the public hearing essentially, and um and then we'll get to the the approval.
Okay. Any questions at the table?
Yeah.
Okay, um I need a
Motion.
A motion, please.
I'll make a motion and approve resolution two thousand twenty two dash zero seven, setting a mileage rate of six point three zero mils.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any questions, any comments from the public? Okay, closing from the public, uh all in favor?
I.
Great, Steve, next one.
We take a break. All right, I'm gonna go through these real quick, it stayed fairly consistent since um since we met in July and uh with the uh the proposed budget to the tentative budget that was approved on September twelfth, there have been no changes since the twelfth, so essentially you've got a general fund budget of ten five million dollars uh based on a middle rate of six point three percent, we did see property value to three one and a half percent, we have estimated reserves of about one point five million dollars. Um we did make some updates from July now. Um some of the increases, again, uh you've got increases for staff about four percent, five percent for directors, four percent for the Oakland Police Department, uh five hundred dollar bonus for full-time staff, and then you will see uh we have a resolution um that we need to do it by resolution in order to make any increases to retirement, so you will see two things on there, one is for uh police officers to go from twelve percent to fourteen percent, and it has been budgeted. And then also to have Jack's retirement become mentor with mine, so those two will be a resolution at the regular meeting, but just to let you know that has been budgeted, it is part of the budget, both those items. And as far as the police department is really about retention and trying to at least be commensurate with the surroundings, we're still not quite there, but we've we've done we're doing a great job with the retirements for the police department. Uh there is one new sworn officer position, and we have made the pivot, and you'll see the contracts tonight to permanently, uh or at least in in the next couple of years to have a uh planning director that will be on contract, so that's one of the things at the next meeting, um you know, at the regular meeting to approve so that I can sign that contract. Uh we've been really happy with uh working with Mr. Cornice. Um anyway, so we've deleted the assistant town planner and the director of planning positions. Um increases, we've got events in the budget, um we've got the H P A C replacement in the budget, and we also have the uh the the next phase of the grant for the historic cemetery of eighty five thousand dollars. Um and then we've got funding in there for marketing and branding as we roll out our new uh branding. Utility fund budget is five and a half million dollars, uh we do have as of June, when I put this together originally, we had sixteen hundred and forty four customers uh that were being built through the water, wastewater, we've probably got six or seven hundred customers on the wastewater system now, and that's increasing on a on a fairly regular basis with uh as the new houses on. Um we do have quite a few customers on the winter garden side, they are on wastewater also, they just don't show up within our system because of the agreements of open park and winter garden. Again, we've got the same kind of raises in there for staff with the utility department, and we've got reserves just under one point three million dollar. Um we've got a couple of projects, including lift station number six uh between the public that will serve the school and the public safety building and some of the development on highway fifty, and we've got lift station seven, which will serve a residential development and also will have the capacity to pick up uh some of the west side of town, we're ready to do the next septic disover conversion. Uh it isn't in the short term, but at least we have that capacity for the future. Uh we also have um the alternative water project that we will, it's a new lobby for, and the redundant well project, which is under construction um as we speak. Um and then, like I said, the the wastewater connection, we also have a separate project to connect the uh police station and the the school to the new lift station once it's constructed. We've got a number of uh impacty projects, and they're all listed in the presentation, which the presentation will be part of the minutes, but we um we've got some water system projects um including the alternative water project, we've got some money that we're putting in as well as the money that we we're getting from uh the S R F to get the design going and keep money so that if we can get some money through the legislature and through some other grants, we can get that project under construction sooner than later. But we are moving forward with that project as it's an important one uh for the town, and you saw the water plan a couple of weeks ago uh where uh C P H came in and talked about our long-term needs and future issues we might have with our consumption use permit. Uh this certainly helps if we're making these kind of efforts, have those conversations in the future. Um. See where we are, parks and recreation, again, we've got a couple of uh of continuing projects with Spear Park, including um the pavilions of potential butterfly gardens and the construction of a junior court, a half court next to the other half court that's out there. We've also been working um in the background for the Sadler Park Trail, and we'll continue to do that, it'll be an eight-foot um multi uh multi an eight-foot path, a pedestrian and bicycle path that will connect lonely to Touch Street and uh eventually become a loop to uh the West Orange Trail. Um and there's some other additions that we we've got plenty of space over there next to that commercial area, where we could put a small park in, maybe a dog park, and definitely some Magnificent Place stations. And we're hoping we can um uh partner with some other agencies to maybe get some funding for that, um as we get that further along in the We also have the law enforcement impact fees, and we'll be making some some purchases with that, and that's for, you know, expanding capacity, and we do have one new sworn officer that we're looking to to hire this year, so we will have some needs to to add some uh some things with that new officer uh equipment and such. Uh on the transportation side, a big part of this is, you know, just finishing up the roundabout, and we've got money there for post-design services as well as um finishing the project with the landscaping piece that wasn't included in the construction. Uh we've got some turnouts in there that that Mike's been working on, and I think those have turned out real well, the ones that we've done so far. Um we've got just some general money in there for uh study and design, uh we've got some money in there for Oakland Avenue and Jefferson improvements to take and leverage the money that we're getting from the developer and try to enhance that particular area in line with the complete street uh visioning that we've done for the entirety of Oakland Avenue. Uh we've got the Star Street construction, which we've got that contract signed, hopefully, construction will start here soon in the fall, don't have a notice to proceed date, and then we've got money reserves for future projects, and like I said, we'll bring that up um later in this fiscal year to talk about some long-term transportation planning in line with our complete street, and hopefully, we'll be able to talk about I don't wanna advocate for it, but if the sales tax passes with Orange County, we may have some additional funding that can also be talked about as part of the transportation. Um and then we've got uh administrative facilities, we've got about two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars uh in funding there, and I may have something to bring forward to you in the next month or so, uh have to do with that funding and an opportunity that is which I'll talk to you, we got uh as further length. So we may very early in the year come to that, uh to do that money out of reserves for for um but we'll And then we've been doing some hydrant upgrade, in fact, they've done one over uh over near the uh the new lift station, I can't think of it, I think it's on Brock. Uh they're putting some pipes in over there, and that has to do with the new hydrant and some upgrades, we're continually trying to make sure we've got that covered uh and have water where we need it. Uh Oakland Avenue Charter School, and we met with the SAC this afternoon, and I talked a little bit to them about the budget and where we're at, but we've got a six point six million dollar budget, uh four hundred and eighty one thousand in estimated reserves, food salary raises of up to three percent, and five hundred dollar bonus for full-time employees. Uh they've already embarked on a lot of these improvements, including the classroom technology purchases, and they've had two presentations, one on technology and one can give you an update um last month where things are at, so you've got a lot of this information in recent presentations. Um we do have uh made one change in a position, um we have funding from S R three funds, just under one point four million dollars. A lot of that's budgeted in twenty twenty two, twenty three, the rest of it will be budgeted in twenty three, twenty four. Reach that gap that COVID has created with students, um and we're also adding five uh part-time positions with that. Uh overall, we have a a budget of just over twenty eight million dollars, so you've got a general fund of ten million five hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, back fees of five million four hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars, a utility fund of five million five three six seven eight two, and then the school budget of six million six hundred thousand, six hundred and thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars. And for a total of twenty eight million seventy nine thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollars. So what I would recommend is approval of resolution twenty two, twenty twenty two dash zero eight, adopting the final budget in the amount of twenty eight million seventy nine thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollars uh for the town of Oakland.
Okay, um do we have any questions? I think that was rather thorough.
Yes.
But on time. Uh so I need a a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the motion, you know, two two dash oh eight.
Okay, second, movement seconded, okay, any questions or any comments at the table? Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Hi.
We are going to recess until seven o'clock. So um and for those of you who have just joined us, we are working on an expedited meeting, but we will only be hearing very short issues and pushing things down the calendar. So um while we're happy you're here, I wanna make sure that staff is able to get home in a safe way. So they don't necessarily live close to Steve. I'm gonna open the regular commission uh meeting in Oakland at seven o'clock. We are going to try and have an expedited meeting, given the fact that we have a storm coming, and I wanna get staff home, if we can get them home. Um so uh please stand for the pledge and the invocation. I pledge allegiance and to the holy South.
Father God, thank you once again for trusting us with your town. I ask that you put a hedge of protection around our town, our neighbors, and that the hurricane dissolves before it hits us here in central Florida, and that we uh make decisions that are best for our citizens, and we honor you in all we say this evening, and we go home safer. In your name we pray, amen.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you, South.
Hey, roll call, Commissioner
Here.
President.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
President.
Mayor Stark.
Here.
We're all here in the upper class.
Okay, thank you very much, um we have three proclamations, we are only gonna read the um uh intros on these, uh and they're still considered legal. Um the first one is a resolution of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting, oh no, wait a minute, wrong one, so sorry.
Keep on down.
Let's skip on down, um town of Oakland Blind Americans Equality Day by joint resolution approved on October sixth nineteen sixty four, Congress designated October fifteenth as of each year as White Canes Safety Day to recognize the contributions of Americans who are blind or have impaired vision. Um National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas October twenty second marks thirty seven years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women and men about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. Okay, one more proclamation declaring this one serious, um declaring a state of local emergency, this qualifies us for funding in the event that we have damages from the hurricane, which we truly believe we will have, and this is enables FEMA funding. Um whereas section two five two dash three eight, Florida statutes authorize the town of Oakland to declare a state of emergency and to waive the procedures and formalities otherwise required of political subdivisions by law. Okay.
Again.
All right, and I know that we have a number of people here for public forum, um we ask that if you wish to speak, that you keep your comments leave, um three minutes is the maximum, hi Shane, and um please not to be redundant, um Maureen has given me the packet, and she has given me the petition. And this would happen regardless as up to the storm, is this is the information that we have not had um officially, and we will give this to our staff, and we will be coming back to you at a date um that we will set certain at another meeting to discuss once we've had time for our staff to study and make a recommendation, but um Maureen, um if you could summarize in three minutes or less what you guys are asking us to do as a town. And please stand up and let us see you.
We're gonna have a podium tonight. And you can get picked up on the microphone.
Okay. Good for the record, my name is Maureen Jacobson, I live at four hundred North Nixon Street here in Oakland. To keep this brief, the purpose of our petition is to make the town of Oakland a sanctuary town for our P Fowl. Why? Because Oakland was established in eighteen eighty seven, as we all know. Um for those of us living in this era, we found that Oakland's farm, not only in our historic district, but in nature. We have known this town to be full of peacocks that have, within the last year, gone missing, the majority of them. Any species cannot survive without the females, which we are missing. And what we are asking the town, which I've given a lot of information for you to please look at, is that we save the remaining peacocks in this town, and also to make this town a sanctuary town for these peacocks. I have gone above and beyond all this work that I've done, I've talked to um the Department of Agriculture, I've talked to each town that is or city that is already um a sanctuary town, and they have not had any problems, matter of fact, they have no people even called them in since the nineteen sixties or nineteen nineties, wherever. Um so I'm gonna stop it now, I've only been given three minutes, and we take into consideration everyone that's here tonight, and there's more that could not make it because they're preparing for the long, otherwise I would have had this room full. I have petitions that have over a hundred and sixty for you with their names, addresses, and phone numbers for you to call them. And here's another one, yes, names, addresses, and phone numbers, please give them a call if you wish, and they will be happy to um stake their their claim.
Okay, and um uh we appreciate all the work that you've done and the passion that people have around the P Fowl, and we will definitely be taking all of this into account and doing our own research so that we can come back with a good answer. And um I just wanna go on the record, I know it was on We Are Oakland, which is not a town sanctioned Facebook site.
Right.
Um and we did feel the need to make a statement, and we have neither relocated or euthanized any P Fowl in this, I just wanna make it on the record.
Thank you, because I did add that in my in my paperwork, it was
In this um town, and um P Fowl are not uh native to Oakland or to Florida, and they are considered a nuisance bird, so we're not gonna argue that fact right now, we're gonna come back to that when we have done all our research and we can have a a great back and forth conversation, but that is
I look forward to that, man, thank you.
Yeah, that is our position right now, and that, I'm just repeating what we have put up on the site.
Okay.
Does that mean that it might change? Maybe, I don't know.
And can I ask one more question, please?
Sure.
For everyone here, please do not take um your own personal feelings, how you feel about this creature. Um please just read my information, take to heart what the majority of the residents of our town feel, as to just your personal feelings, if that's okay?
Well, that's what we're here for, I mean, if we took into account our personal feelings on anything that we act on, that would be very wrong.
Okay.
So that's how we approach any issue.
No, I think Alicia's your your email.
And I am turning all of this information over to our town clerk, we will be working with our attorney and our town manager on the next step. And that does require uh, you know, some funding and some time of staff um based on where we are with them.
All right, thank you all.
Do we, yes, thank you for being here, I know, you know, with the storm and everything, that, you know, this is an important subject, and we are gonna take it seriously.
And you're all invited to stay for the rest of this riveting meeting, if you so choose, or you do not, if you if you would like to leave.
Please tell me if that I'm not. But anyway, thank you very much, and you are welcome to be able to go if you would like, so.
Oh sure, it's okay now.
All right, anybody else on public forum that is not about peacocks? All right, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Um consent agenda, does anybody have any questions or comments about the consent agenda, otherwise I will take a motion.
I'll make that motion, accept the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded, does anybody from the audience have a comment or a question? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Second public hearing ordinance two thousand twenty two dash nineteen.
Second public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty two dash nineteen, and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting new official municipal logos, creating a new section two point two town logos in article one chapter two of the town of Oakland code of code of ordinances, governing use of the municipal logos and penalizing the unauthorized use thereof, providing for use of the municipal logos by third parties where authorized by the town and providing for codification, conflict severability, and ineffective.
Hey.
All right, this is the second reading of this uh um ordinance, and essentially this ordinance is protecting the the commission approved the town logo back in July, now this puts it into the code as far as protecting that logo uh for the official use only of the of the the town. Um it basically solidifies our ownership of the brand, staff recommends approval of the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash nineteen to protect to protect the official town ordinance.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments at the table, we have discussed this, this will be probably the third time we've discussed it.
Good.
Um I think we all like it, and we're looking forward to seeing it on the water tower and on the street signs and other places.
We're working on that.
I know you are, I know you are, um so uh if we don't have any questions or comments at the table, I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty two dash nineteen.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's removed. Hey, it's removed and seconded. I need to open a public hearing for this, do we have anyone who wishes to comment? Yes, sir.
For unauthorized websites or social media, they cannot use that.
Right. This is, this is to protect it, so that's exactly right.
But the old logo is pretty groovy too.
Hang on a second, I've got it.
Acorn.
So gradual change, a gradual change to this, it's already out on our website. But at, you know, you got, it's so many places, you gotta change your stationery, you gotta change your business cards. I am a big proponent, which is why I was smiling at Steve, of changing the water tower and the street signs as soon as possible, because that's really where you get your bang visually for your buck. And this is not very different from what we had, so we're really pleased with just the updating and having a, a style guide and colors and a much more significant presence with the logo. Okay? That makes sense?
Oh yeah.
And if you wanna come look at this, you're more than welcome. This is just, just a couple of things. Yeah. Yeah, there's some over there.
There's a dollar of peafowl.
All right, Second Public Hearing Ordinance 2022-20.
And then we gotta vote on it.
Vote on it. Oh, we didn't vote, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's what you call an expedited meeting, right? Second Public Hearing Ordinance 2022-1.
Okay, this is the Second Public Hearing for Ordinance 2022-20 and Ordinance of the Town of Oakland, Florida revising Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulation of the Town's Code of Ordinances, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
I'll go ahead and speak, Jack's gonna speak to the, some of the other islands, but I'll go ahead and speak to this, just to keep things expedited. We are making, updating Chapter 14 of the code. We had stuff in there that was outdated, stuff that was redundant. You've gotta clear in the agenda package, everything, all the strike throughs and everything that was added and taken out. So staff recommends that the town commission adopt ordinance 2022-20 to make the needed changes to the wording of Chapter 14. And most, most sections are unchanged, but there were some definite things we needed to update to be consistent with Florida statutes.
Okay, Jack, you got anything?
Since the first reading, we have refined the language to satisfaction of Orange County Fire Rescue Department to be consistent with what they want us to do.
And for those of you before we move on to formalities, I know this is expedited meeting, which I asked for. So, but I don't know that if you guys know Jack, Jack is our new Assistant Town Manager. And he has proven himself to be rather valuable already to us, and we're happy to have him. And then while I'm at it, yeah, you're shaking your head. This is Shane Taylor. And for those of you who don't know him or do know him, he is the Chair of our PNC Board. So we're happy that he is involved and has been involved and is here tonight.
Sorry, we had to advertise that.
They're saying cognito over in the side, but.
But I like it when people are involved and they should get that. Resolutions, resolution, oh wait a minute, we did vote, sorry, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to.
We don't have questions.
Ordinance 2022-20.
Moved and seconded, anybody, you have a question?
I do, I wanna know this ordinance.
Chapter 14 is the part of the code, the buildings and building permits, building regulations. It predates the Florida Building Code being created. And so it creates its own town building code as well. So we had to strike that out because it's a system with the Florida Building Code. We had to then add sections that talk about how we deal with the Fire Prevention Code, which was a new thing since that was written originally without addressing it then. And the process of building permit review, the authority of the building official, and also the setup, the fee structure, which are the next two resolutions we're gonna talk about. So I think it's struck more than it put in, in terms of getting rid of the old stuff that conflicts with the Florida Building Code.
If you pull, did you know all that information, this is, and everything that.
The underlying is new and the strike through is.
Clean up, clean up all nine.
Yeah, and it's, it's a cleanup and it's also part of all the work that the town staff does that people don't generally see. That's very important. Any other questions? Okay, bring it back to the table, all in favor? Resolutions, Resolution 2022-10.
This resolution is to adopt plan review fees. Chapter 14 says you need to adopt a resolution to establish the plan review fees and the building permit fees. And so these two resolutions handle that task. It's consistent with the fees that you've had in the past. We've made a few little adjustments, mostly downward, as we've gotten better at the review process and we found that we could do things a little more expedited to review. Many of these fees are based on a combination of an administrative portion and a consultant reimbursement portion. Since we don't have town staff now to do plan review, we have to be establishing the contract with weight trim. And so that's a pass through for that, as well as for advertising fees. You may have seen, you know, ads in the newspaper. We send out letters to neighbors to let them know that something is, is happening. All those types of processes that we go through, this establishes the fees for them.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Any questions at the table? I need a motion, please?
Just for the first one, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, make motion to accept Resolution 2022-10.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded, any questions, any comments? From the public? And we're gonna need to get your name for the minutes. So just if you, no, you spoke, so.
If you could just sign in on.
If he's just signed in on that sheet.
Thank you.
We need those names for the minutes.
You got all your names on the other. Took her a long enough day.
He was working on that. All right, I'll bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion or Resolution 2022-11.
Yes, this resolution covers building permit fees. It also talks about when fees are collected, there are three different points in the process that people may need to make a payment. It also accommodates the plan review portion that goes with building permits, such as to check setbacks for accessory buildings or for additions to houses. So it covers the process as well as the prices. And this is consistent with the way we've been doing business in the past. So this is just redoing that and providing some additional details.
Was that the one that needed additional language?
Yes.
Okay.
One fee that wasn't in the original.
What we, what we discovered after the agenda was published was that we needed to establish sort of a de minimis fee. We had all these specialized fees listed in here, but for the more routine things, we had fitted a standard fee of $150 that would go to regular kinds of permits that don't need a lot of. And so we worked with, put that in here since it's tied to permits rather than to the plan review.
That's the additional language. Okay, I have the additional language. So do we have any questions at the table? Okay, Mike, Mike has additional language, so he's gonna put it in the motion and you all can hear it.
I move the town commission to adopt Resolution 2022-11 with the addition of a basic zoning review fee of $150 for building permits, requiring such a review but not otherwise listed as having a specific zoning review fee in the resolution.
Second.
Hey, any questions, any comments at the table? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience?
Are the proposed, proposed fees increasing? What you're, or they say the same?
Pretty much saying the same.
There's a few that went down, a point or both.
Thank you Shane. All right, bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2022-12.
All right, I spoke about this in the budget presentation. Anytime we make any changes to the retirement contribution that the town makes, we need to do that by resolution. We, what was included in the budget was an increase of 12% to 14% for officers. And that's trying to get them closer to what their peers make at other jurisdictions. And then the town manager with the new town manager position commensurate with what my company.
And that is to reduce turnover and the part of it is to reduce turnover.
It is, it is in effect trying to maintain retention for our police officers and keep, we've got a great staff, a great group of police officers, and we do wanna make sure.
How far are we from the neighbors or peers?
It just depends, if you're in the Florida retirement system, a jurisdiction could be making up to 26% of the contribution. It's, it's a little bit different, it's because it's a pension plan. Other places, like 17 to 19%, I believe, Windermere is at 19%. So we are trying to inch this up to be closer to what, what the peers are.
Nice, good. Cool.
Any further questions or comments at the table? All right, I need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 2022.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments from the audience? Isn't this fun?
I love how such. I can't say enough, I get it.
I'll bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, other policy matters, contract with PDCS Limited Liability Corporation for building permitting and inspection fee.
And we have the changes to the ordinance and the resolutions. We can now hire the contractor to do the work. And what they get paid is based on those fees. The first one here that you're looking at is with the firm of weight trim. As Steve mentioned earlier, we have a contract with them that expires September 30th. This would continue that contract with some slight modifications. Attached in the agenda is the basic outline of what it would look like. We are piggybacking on the contract they have with Windermere, but we will have an addendum that talks about the things specific to the town of Oakland and lists the fee structures and things of that type that are specific here. One of the things that we've done that goes beyond what Windermere did was we talked about which level position inside the organization will typically do which type of work. So we have more of an idea from a budgeting perspective of how, how the fees are gonna break out, because there's like a two to one ratio in there from high to low in terms of hourly rates and things of that type.
Okay.
We've also had to set up a workflow to be able to send them the effort and how that gets.
More fun. So I'm looking at this and let's make sure we're all clear. The first item is a contract with PCDS.
Okay.
Second is weight trim.
Oh, we did it the other way around. So PDCS, this is, they've been our contractors since 2015.
Yep.
Building permits. They have agreed to pretty much extend the process they've been doing. They have requested that they take full control of the workflow so that they will be handling 100% of the process. We're gonna be making some changes to our website so that instead of accepting the applications here and then sending them to PDCS, they'll go directly to PDCS. We'll be switching to an all electronic process. They're gonna start accepting digital signatures on, on plans that have to be signed and sealed and be able to streamline the process by not moving paper around. If we made any concessions for folk, we do have folks in town that aren't quite computer savvy. Any way that we can help them through that, we might need to consider that. They, they have the option to go to the PDC and, and give them paper documents if they wanna do. One of the things that we're, we've tried to accommodate is to simplify some of the processes. For example, because we're going to all online, we now can take advantage of a provision of Florida statutes that allows people to check a box rather than getting notarized signatures. So that'll be one of the things that speeds the process up a little bit, makes it simpler for people to be able to get the permits in.
And, you know, it's been 15 years that I've dealt with this, whether it's at a real, my real job where I get paid money. And, you know, or this kind of work. And when, when, when are we gonna get to the point where it's, you just do it on the computer? I mean, when? Because it really, really slows down everything when someone is not able to. And I, I just don't think there are that many people anymore that aren't able to.
We'll still be able to make sure we take care of anybody that, that has any issues with this, if there's somebody that.
That's all I'm saying is that.
I know, but.
We will, we will make sure we accommodate, in general, we are working to try to streamline this and, and make this as.
Right. It's just a never ending question.
I think that's just an attrition thing, that's as, as ages move along.
Right.
That, it's not just a.
I just don't know, I, I personally, I mean, now, you know, you and I are old now.
Totally.
And we know how to use a computer.
It's. But I do know, I do personally know people that actually know.
And you know what, that's their choice, and then they need to live with that choice.
I've, I've seen it all.
Yeah.
And it's been getting more sophisticated in planning, structure.
And not to make a big.
A lot of people have, we're 90%, you know, 95% there. I deal with it all the time, that some people just wanna do paper. I don't like.
That's their choice.
And PDF them, but there's some people who still do it, so we, you know, we.
Okay, certainly make sure that's all.
But, you know, in my mind, the point I'm trying to make is that, at this day and age, with people you, you know, that are as old as we are, it's their choice. And then they have to live with that choice. And we shouldn't have to, like, do somersaults to help them.
Okay.
We're not, we're not there yet, but I'll get you.
Since the applications online, we're at least saving the point of them having to get notarized signatures and then scan those documents and send those in.
Okay, I will get off my soapbox and Mike will get off his and we'll move on. So was this A or B, Jack?
That would be A.
Okay. So.
You're approving, giving me the authority to, to finish this contract and sign it.
PDCS, and then the other one is to have a contract with Waitrim.
Yeah, and same thing, giving me the authority to sign a contract with Waitrim.
In both instances, we've shown you the basic documents. There may be some little I's and T's to be worked on to get it into the final form. But this is the direction we wanna go and you'd be authorizing the town manager to to finish that negotiation process and execute the contracts.
Makes sense, so do I have a motion for item A?
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager contract with PDCS.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, okay, I'm gonna open it to the public, did you have a?
That's my new term, engine. That was all three of my driving, how are you?
Only comment I, I add on what you were saying was that just some people aren't as educated as you are, most of you are. And there's people who are older than you are and they're just stuck in that rut, they don't. And like you said, it's their choice.
It's their choice.
But at the same time, we're not going to sit there and try to teach semi-year-olds how to use a.
No, and I'm not, I'm not really asking for that.
No, you're not, but I'm saying is like, just have a little bit patience. That's why they have to have that option to be able to print it and do it the way until everybody graduates into the new world.
Or help them into the new world.
But we found.
If they come to us.
He will, our town will help us.
We will certainly make this as easy as possible for anybody, in a lot of cases, you're, you're hiring a contractor. If somebody needs some help, we are here to.
But I can.
That's what I was going to say, very seldom does the individual homeowner pull a permit.
But I can tell you, I worked for D.C. for forty years. We moved to an SAP platform. And you had no choice, you had to have a bank account or a savings account and you got your check deposited electronically into that account. There was no choice given and believe me, everybody figured it out.
Got a little busy.
You know, they figured it out and there were a lot of other nuances to it, but that was a big one.
Again, we can go on and on, but the point is if someone needs help, we'll help them.
We'll help them. I'm just, I'm just complaining. All right, so are we back to the table, do we have any more comments?
I just have one question. Are they, you think we're moving to the state or the federal? Having some kind of regulation to push organizations to do this?
The state is pushing it, that's why we have set up. Going on things you haven't seen as part of this package is the guidance for digital signatures. They've been approved for several years. The state has recognized ability to turn in permits online, do that, you check a box, maybe type your name rather than getting a notarized signature. So a lot of those things have been accommodated in state and they are pushing, they mandate.
Right, so I was asking.
Local governments to do all these things in electronic form. They make the paper optional, they mandate the electronic.
Right, okay.
How do you sign the whole thing?
Yeah, I think in the past two or three years, all the municipalities I deal with, they've all gone for this procedure where you do online permitting.
But it's happening in all industries and even in healthcare, you even get incentivized if you use electronic as, you know, certain, certain, you know, the government where, you know, grant groups additional money, they've pushed everybody.
State didn't give you a choice either in that.
It didn't give you a choice since nineteen seventy-one.
This is not us, I just want to make sure, I know it's not us, so, a lot of stuff comes from the federal.
And we, we helped them.
Right.
We helped them, but, you know, it was a mandate.
Yeah.
But we helped them get there. So, you know, and that's what we would do here is help them get there and my expedited meeting is going on. Um, so, we're back at the table, correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, B, which Jack kind of led with. Do we have any questions at the table about that? Okay, I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to accept to give permission to town manager to go into contract with Waitrim for planning services.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, any questions or any comment? All right, bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steve, you got anything?
Real quick, obviously Hurricane Ian's taken up a lot of our times today and this week. The town is, we have announced the town will be closed on Wednesday and Thursday and quite possibly on Friday, that doesn't mean, you know, all our services will be taking place, both on PD will have extra shift on start of Friday. Public works will be available, we will get out here to assess things as things happen and the storm moves off. But we're, we're good, well, the actual offices will be closed on, on Wednesday and Thursday. For staff safety and possibly on Friday. And the Open Avenue Charter School is following what it's, BS is doing, CPS is now closed on Friday also, so the Charter School will be closed Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. So, and we'll just ride this out and we've got all our things in place that we need to have in place. It will long term react accordingly.
And no garbage pickup tomorrow, recycle.
Police management has indicated that they will come out and be doing garbage pickup at a certain point. They have to get off the road once some bins get up above thirty miles an hour, they can't have their trucks on the road. But they, they did indicate this afternoon that they would be in town tomorrow. But I would, if you put your garbage out, I would keep an eye on it and bring it back in if they don't come. And they are going to try to catch us up, they, they may not be, they definitely won't be on the road Thursday. They may be on the road Friday depending on when the storm moves out. If they're not here Friday, they'll try catching us up on Saturday early next week, so we're just going to have to be patient, they've got the same kind of things. So, have to try to be patient. We have a page, Alicia set up a page on the website where she's going to keep updating information. So if you go there, you can keep up with what we're doing, she'll be working twenty-four seven and that up to date. And as we get in solid waste and everything else, we put it up there also on Facebook page, we put this up there also. We'll try to keep, as far as town, what's going on with the town, we'll try to keep that information up as best we can.
Okay. All right, Sal, got anything?
Just want to bring up the Hispanic Festival or, hey, we had about twelve days ago, was great, great attendance. Getting better the, the music, the dancers, it was really nice, so really happy about that, just want to say that.
And the Creamery stuff was really good.
That's rum cake.
Rum cake.
Rum cake was out, just. Right on, that's, they're going to potentially be our vendor there, correct?
Yeah, we're working with West Orange Creamery to take a concession at the Parents' Center, so they're working on that, so, yeah, they've been a great partner.
And hot dog therapy is here every Wednesday.
Yes.
For sure, and then as we need him otherwise.
Yes.
He's a great guy, so nice.
Probably not tomorrow.
I think he probably won't be here.
He'll get a big night.
Yeah, yeah, he's still popular, he's been out.
He's right out by the History Center.
Yeah, just been kind of trying to see if that.
Yeah, he's, we hired him. And the staff, I think, really likes having that opportunity on Wednesdays to be able to go get something real close. Yeah, he's got big ones, he's got sausages. Sorry, and then regular hot dogs. And he has grapes and pickles and drinks, so.
He has an excellent story, his background.
Yeah.
How he chose the names.
He's a really nice guy. We go up there and if you buy ten hot dogs, you get one for.
I can't eat eleven at once.
Not at once. Um, Rick?
Just, Nature Fest went real good at O N P, had a good showing and everything went smooth.
And Jack's tribute, Jack, or Jack, not Jack. Jim Thomas, sorry, tribute was very nice.
Yeah, yeah, it really was.
Joseph?
I'd say a big thank you on the planning committee, you know, we had Alicia, we had Jessica, we had Lynn, you know, Daya, the police were awesome on it.
Oh, they were amazing.
You know, Mr. Parker, everything he put together, you know, he and I have been doing things like this for a long time and kind of bringing it up to speed and catching up and doing it even better. You know, with Steve quarterbacking everything, everything was great, staff was great, police was great, and approval of the, of the commission. We've had a great night and, you know, I just want to say thank you.
It was.
Allowing us to collaborate like that on that.
It was magical, I thought it was magical, I am sitting there in beautiful weather watching this guy who, the sound was just outrageously good.
Can we do that more?
Well, he was pretty expensive and we had great.
But we do have other concerts.
But we do, we do aspire to that, but he was, he's the most recorded bass player in the world.
Yeah, yeah. And, and he had a great time, you know, when I was telling Steve, when I dropped him off at the airport, I went to hug, shake his hand, hugged me, kissed me and he told me to tell everybody thank you, that he had a really good time, you know.
And did you figure?
It was so good, the, the residents and the people that were here really made, you know.
Oh, it's fabulous.
The best weather night of the whole year.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Oh, that's right, lunch went off, too, it was great.
It was just, it was amazing, do you think you had about seven hundred, that's what I was, or am I being?
That's what the papers said, that's what Mike thought, you know, I know people floating in and out throughout the day, but.
Yeah, there was at least three or four hundred people at any point in time, but there was a lot of coming and going.
Because the parking lot was jam packed all the way to the church.
Organized, people, there was a, a police officer, every.
Yeah, police were.
Return to help.
These were great, even to the end of the night, police were, I mean.
Everybody, all staff, everybody, Joseph. Now, it was, it was just magic.
Yes. I love what.
So, yes, we do want to do it again, but we got to find the money.
I love what you said when you grabbed the mic, that.
Did not come to Winter Park, it did not come to Maylin or Windermere or Winter Garden, it came to Oakland.
Yeah.
That was beautiful, I think.
Yeah.
It gave me chills.
Very intentional about that because all, all the art stuff is on the I four corridor, there was an actual concert in Calceberry that same night. So there's a lot of art stuff on I four corridor. And even us getting the grant for this, the center was part of United Arts Trial, Punch County spreading arts to other parts of the county, because if you look at this central, I mean, other than the museum, I'm not museum, but the, the theater in Winter Garden, there's no arts on a regular basis out.
Right.
Punch County, so.
What's the likelihood of getting that saxophonist next year? The guy who played at the.
Najee?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's, that's easy.
He's local?
He lives in Apocahou, actually lives in Apocahou.
But he's really famous, isn't he?
Very famous, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Takes off.
He's already, he's already worldwide, yeah, he's already, yeah, he's, he's, oh, I've met him in November at a, at a jazz concert, we exchanged numbers and so and then I, I was texting him, asking him, you know, about some other stuff and he's like, and he called me and said, hey, I see that Ron Carter coming, can I come? I'm like, sure, sure, you can come, so that's how it happened that week, he had called me back.
That would have been, and that concert would have been anywhere else, you would have been paying fifty bucks a ticket to go in at a minimum.
Usually, yeah.
At a minimum.
He actually is.
I was telling, that's what I was saying, but, yeah, that grant has a workshop tomorrow, so I'll be online tomorrow at the Grant Workshop, because so the grant is.
The retirement.
Doris Duke Foundation and their goal is to spread access to art or music nationwide. And so just a little quick, you know, synopsis, I know we kind of messed up.
Oh, you're all right, you're all right.
In order to do it, it has to be three organizations, and so this one was an organization out of Alabama, New York and I. So that's how it all came together. And so they did theirs last year, or, no, you'll get it last year, Alabama did it this summer and I did it yesterday, a couple of days ago, so, yeah. So Alabama's already on board, so Alabama and I are already talking to do it, we got to find a third person, Alabama said they have a third person. And so I'm going to the, where I'm going is Grant, all the organizations are out of New York. But it's called Chamber Music of America, they have dollars and grants for music and art expression nationwide, but Doris Duke is the portion for this, it's called the Jazz Concert Show.
What I ask Commissioner to do is after he has this meeting, after he goes through the thing tomorrow, to bring it back at the next commission meeting. And if, if town wants to partner with them, then we can move forward with doing this again next year.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
I, I'll, we'll talk about it again on the other.
You know, just to kind of, you know, we have an audience which we never have.
Yep.
Is, you know, that was the whole point of the Heritage and Arts and History Center was to bring things like this to Oakland. That's how we got a million dollars from the West Orange Healthcare District. And to help build that, there was not any local taxpayer dollars spent on that History Center and it is just a beautiful place. And now we're going to have a concessionaire that has quality stuff, it's just, you know, it's going to take off, it takes a little bit, get it going. But it's going to take off and, you know, we are staffing it, so. But it's just very important.
So we put the times for the Friday, please, on the course. I work, I mean, I think a lot of people work on Friday from eleven AM to three.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't understand that.
Okay, well, we can talk about it, we'll take it under advisement.
Yes.
That was just, but this, this Saturday night event was magical, as far as I was concerned.
But it elaborated, so I mean, that's, that's the only way it happened.
Yep.
Everyone worked together, yeah.
Yep.
Everybody worked, it was seamless, yeah, and all, whatever gaps that either side had, each side kind of.
Well, nobody saw them and.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Kind of.
We made the sausage behind the scenes, so.
Yeah.
We had, we had some pre meetings and so the sausage making was behind the scenes and.
Sitting on the back end.
Had some phone calls, yeah, so, yeah, but whatever, whatever gaps we had, yeah, either side were able to come together.
Yep.
And, yeah. And the musicians have been in Florida in a long time, so it was a treat for them, Florida doesn't really pull that type of talent. And so.
They were silly not to go to dinner, but we'll talk about that next time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
Worked your tail off on that. Mikey?
No, we talked about the school, so other than just saying thank you, 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 I, I understand it always takes, you know, everyone to pitch in and do everything, but we really, you need to take some credit for, for leading the charge with all this art music stuff, you were fabulous with. We all really appreciate it.
Down, Mr. Peter, I tell people that's my drug, I love it.
Well.
It's my natural drug.
And we can tell in your passion with it, so thank you.
That was, I, I totally, I, I didn't expect that level of the sound, oh my God, so anyway.
Anyway.
I told Steve that I did not get paid enough this month, but Joseph definitely didn't get paid enough. So we had a chamber board meeting, we had a meeting with Bloom and Grow, we're looking to become a pollinator town. We had a meeting with Habitat to see how we can partner on some more homes here in town. I, Mike, or not Mike, Steve and I saw the Girl Scouts and took them through the History Center and walked them around, they were so cute, they were daisies and brownies. And then, of course, the concert on Saturday and the O N P event.
And again, that same way, it, you know.
It was like, okay, where am I supposed to be now, what am I supposed to be doing?
Was, yes, you know, and every one of them were wonderful.
Yes, it was all good, all good, 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 this is what we've been aspiring to.
I just.
Yeah.
Um, next time, it might be just an error, but the time would have been.
Oh, it was a error.
We are well aware of the facts.
You know, you're the first person to say that.
We.
I noticed.
We.
I asked them a picture to him immediately, I'm going to.
We did misspell Bounce House, that was not us. That was not us.
Yeah, we noticed how people were just stuck on the little details.
I call it grace or the man in the arena. So, Jack, did you have anything, you take your life in your own hands, you know. So, anything else?
Me.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, it's my first time here, so I've gotten to know Mike, Joseph, Steve.
Jack Butler.
Jack's back here.
Rick and Sal, but I don't know what you guys do or how long you've been doing it.
Let me, let me take it. If I want to take it, I get to take it. These are four fabulous commissioners, they are elected positions, they are required to do four hours. Uh, they are required to do four hours of ethics training every year. They get paid fifty bucks a month and they all do extra stuff. In addition to being a commissioner, South, that's on.
Back Metro Plan.
Metro Plan. Um, Rick is very involved with the O N P. Are you on the board?
Yes, I'm on the board.
He's on the board of Owen?
Actually Vice President this year and slated to be President next year.
And he's very environmentally focused. Mike has been on the commission almost as long as I have. Um, and that's since the nineties. Um, and he is our liaison to the school. And he is also very involved with Santa and the Easter Bunny.
Oh, Santa.
All right, move on.
I think you know what Joseph does. Um, and that's just a little bit of what Joseph does because Joseph and I are very. Well, he's very involved in arts, but there are other things. Um, I sit on the, I'm the mayor, they're the commissioners. I I sit on the uh Chamber of Commerce Board. Um, and then we are de facto uh Florida liaisons to the uh state elected official officials. We bring home money um from the state for things like sewer. And this year, uh, it's.
Got a water project.
What's it named though? I.
Project and another water supply.
So we have, with the help of a um lobbyist, we have brought home millions, like five.
About four million, I think.
About five or four or five million dollars we brought home from the state that our local taxpayers don't have to use for sewer, for alternative water plants, for things that are being watching sausage made. Very boring stuff. But we are in Tallahassee while they're in session. We're building relationships. Um.
Don't forget the Florida League of Cities.
Florida League of Cities. Joseph's super involved with Florida League of Cities. Um, it's a uh, it's kind of like a lobbying um association at the Florida State League and at the Tri-County League. And Joseph is very, very involved in that. So we all make fifty bucks a month. We have since nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-four, ninety-four, and.
Having got a raise.
I've been on the commission since nineteen ninety-four. Mike's been on since nineteen, what, ninety-eight, ninety-seven? Ninety-seven, all, you know, and we don't do this for anything other than the love of this town. I mean, you don't do this kind of work for fifty bucks a month. That's not what drives you. So we've been here a long time and we love this town and we have, you know, the best of intentions. So does that make sense?
Uh, yeah.
You asked for it. You got it.
Well, so Sal, what are you doing again?
Part of the Metro Plan, which is, yeah, downtown.
Roads.
Roads.
Transportation.
Bike four way, I four, you know, we sit down probably every other month, six times a year.
Like also like the bridge, the bridge.
Oh, yeah, everything, anything that happens, yeah.
And that's, that was not us. That was the Turnpike Authority, but he would be the liaison between.
Your background is in, do you entomology or like what's your background on the O N P?
Oh, I've been involved with uh Follow O N P. I was involved with Follow before O N P even started. Um, uh, I actually probably, I was one of them that went with uh Jim Thomas with the machete, trying to figure out where to put the original crills back there. So I've been kinda on and off involved with O N P since day one.
And your background is in management, construction management.
Plumbing manager.
I mean.
Uh, retired plumbing manager for a local company.
And that doesn't really tell the story, cause you're millions of dollars that you worked with.
Follow is the friends of Lickapocka, who's been cleaning up.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you can tell I worked for Disney for forty years. I was a senior leader. I worked on both posts. No, I retired. And Mikey was with Pepsi and.
Thirty years with Pepsi and then self-employed.
So, so proud of these guys. I'm so proud of of the staff. I'm so proud of the commission. Joseph is a pharmacist and has a master's in healthcare. Um, and he says he got his start in politics. How, Joseph?
Taking me to a a fundraiser like in like oh four.
Yep.
Out in Claremont.
Yep.
Mother was running for state rep. Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, she picked me up right at the start.
Don't take.
Pre-court?
Pre-court.
Yeah, I was running for state rep at the time, yeah.
So I'm so, so proud of this commission. I'm so proud of the staff, you know, and so much for an expedited meeting, I guess, and so proud of P and Z.
Oh, here, can I hit you now?
Proud of the A R B.
Watch your background, Shane. Tell us a little bit about you now that you showed up. Now that we already busted the time.
Yeah.
So, say it.
No, I work for uh an organization called Dr. Phillips Charities and what I do is I manage all their real estate.
You're a contractor, right? Like contractors?
But you're not affiliated with Dr. Phillips.
Um, no, I have not. Just.
And um everybody who sits on a board here lives in town. That's a requirement.
It's like you said, if you're one of those things, like.
Yep.
Or you get old and see now and you just don't remember anything.
Can't use a computer.
That's right.
Yes, Stephen's the town manager. Jack's the assistant town manager. Alicia's our town clerk. Our lawyer is on.
That's.
Um.
Stephanie.
Zoom, thank you. Our lawyer's on Zoom.
Yeah, I might not use a computer, but you can't tell what Zoom is.
Yeah.
There is.
They also get it down to the grains. Nothing.
There is one thing that I would ask of you. Um, and I might not be very popular for asking this, but I think the commission would would back me up. The um, We Are Oakland is not a town sanctioned Facebook page. We don't read it. Rarely do we reply, only when we feel like it has, we have to. We have our own Facebook site called The Town of Oakland. And any question that you have that ends up on We Are Oakland is very, is appropriate for our site and will get you an answer much faster.
No, and I love that. Thank you so much because I really thought other stuff was not.
And sometimes it's not.
They were feeling, hey, you know what? Maybe that's his concern, not my concern, maybe, you know, just.
And a lot of times it's just not appropriate.
I'm happy to be with you anytime. My car go front. And, yeah. But I'm happy to meet you anytime. I do coffee. Coffee, man. You know, it's not always a good time for people, but if you can't make that, you're welcome. Make an appointment with me.
That that's like We Are Oakland. Sometimes people just using, they they abuse unnecessary comments that are not helpful for the town.
Kind of like, do I get, do I get um sandbags at town hall? No, you get higher taxes, you know? Billy, did you need to put that up there? And you got lower taxes.
Your website. I've been doing all my research and when I went to it today, it, I was, this looks so great. It really does. It's a beneficial. Um, aggressive. And it's very informative.
And so is, so is the web, the website and the Facebook site.
Yeah. That's really.
You're opposed to play everything on this website. There's also what goes on.
Yeah, and you can sign up for, you can sign up for alerts. Yeah. You put alerts out. If you sign up, it'll come to you.
But I I'm happy to meet you anytime. If you've got a particular issue, call me, email me. We can get together and talk about that. What are my?
Do you have this?
All right, well.
All right, now we bragged on ourselves long enough.
And then we, we're on that website.
Expedited.
Have a task. We'll expect you to answer the questions and.
We are. Joseph?
That's a turn. It's eight oh two.
Oh, look at.
It's in mind that.